I'm going to obey the rule. You are on time. What's yours say? Going to call a meeting order, please. Roll call. Thank you. Please stand in invocation, make signing for the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day we've had. We thank you for the change of season we have here in the next couple of days to officially welcome the summer. We know time passes and we just pray that we would be making our time and days count as we live. Thank you for the chance to meet in freedom. We thank you for our city, for our residents, for our children, for those who work for the city and serve in public safety. And we always be mindful that we are a community and we depend so much on each other and always try and look out for the best of each other. So may we be gracious and thank you now and may you pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and with
Prove the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting and special meeting for a working session held on June 5th, 2018 be approved as
Second please. Mr. Decker, discussion roll call.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Not working? Okay. Communications, Madam Clerk? Very good. Anybody in the audience want to speak to the council on an agenda? I have come forward. It's going once. We were, we will look five minutes and it's a comment period only. So please go right ahead, sir.
Or people calling it agriculture either. Like I say, these are pets. There is, it's nothing, nothing agricultural about it. So I, I thank a couple of you, especially Densberger. You were a no from the get-go. I know where you stand. I respect that. Same way with you, Mr. Mayor. You were pretty much said no from the beginning. I respect that too. But I, I hope we can make it because it really means a lot to us and thank you.
Thank you. Respect your opinion also, sir. Anybody else? Bob, good to see you tonight.
I'm here past your end, of course. First of all, Mr. Decker, understand that the last, during the last half, the last meeting, you were gone to Portland and taking a vacation.
I was, I was telling you, but I didn't have most specific targets. The fire department volunteers for that each time, so I'll talk about it a little bit later, but it does a great
Thank you for doing it. And next I want to talk about Ty Livingston and thank him for all the work and him and his staff done on trying to get an ordinance written up that everybody could live with. I guess it got written up and I guess everybody could live with it. I haven't had the privilege of reading it. And who knows, maybe I wouldn't even understand it if I did, you know? And personally, I thought this was all settled at the last meeting. I'd been the one being accused of, and, and I did, I called you out, you know, about a vote, and that's okay. And, but I considered what was done at the last meeting when three noes, one yes. You know, I know I went to East Peoria schools and, but I did pass math. Not saying that I, I was on the honor roll for it, but I did pass it and three to one is a no to me, okay? And I'm not happy with it and I don't agree with you, but I do respect the fact that you finally made a decision and give an answer, okay? And when people started stopping me on the street and said, well, they're going to put this on the agenda and da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da and on and on, I said, I thought it was over and done. So, of course, I don't do Facebook. I don't do none of this modern up-to-the-minute crap and I don't make no bones about that. And, but anyway, I'm with Bob and Shannon. I hope it passes, but we all know better. But anyway, do what you gotta do and then I guess we'll have to go to a Plan B, which I don't really have one yet, but, you know, it's just like when you was chasing your wife. Okay, you didn't give up easy. You kept going, going, going. Well, I'm just as bullheaded, so this is going to be a long ride, so hang on. And, you know, the time I got, I'm retired, so I got between now and the time they shoved me in the crematory. I don't know how long that is, but it ought to be one hell of a ride. So hang on. Thank you.
I'm going to address that in later time as far as the vote, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is West Paver. I'm resident of East Peoria. I've been watching the whole chicken issue via Facebook and the other social media pages and the news for the last, what, month and a half, two months? And I see a lot of reasons why people want to have chickens and I'll be honest with you, I'm against it. I'm going to take a, take a shot at a couple of the reasons that I've read on Facebook why people think they need to have chickens. Well, according to the ordinance that was proposed, they're going to be allowed to have five birds. So if you figure a chicken produces one egg every 26 hours, that gives you about six eggs per week per bird. It's going to give you 30 eggs in a week. Now, if the average family of four, that's 1.5 eggs per day per person. I don't know about you all, but I don't eat that many eggs in a week. So I'm going to assume that the average family's not going to eat 30 eggs a week. What are they going to do with their extra eggs? You going to sell them? You going to give them away?
Sir, give them respect, please.
Okay. If you're going to sell them or give them away, that kind of makes you a commercial chicken operation. You may want to check with your homeowner's insurance about that because if someone gets sick, who's going to pay the bills? Now then you have the issue of after approximately two years of production with an average laying chicken, your, your, the production of the bird is going to drop by about 40 percent. So now you're down to 18 eggs per week. Now is this still a viable operation for your family depending on what you want to do with these birds? In a commercial operation, those chickens end up going to a processing plant to become chicken pot pies or chicken McNuggets or whatever's going to happen, happen to them. Now, what are we going to do with them? What's, what's going to happen with them, with the family farm chicken? It's going to be, it's going to be a pet. You can tell your kids that you're going to send it down to the food processing plant? Are you going to take it out back, clean it and feed them, to them for dinner the next day? I don't think so. A lot of counties and a lot of areas are having some problems with the chickens ending up in the animal welfare shelters. On 9 December, 2013, Todd Malinsky, a reporter for the Wisconsin State Journal quoted Mary Klaus who operates the Chicken Run Rescue in Minneapolis, Minnesota. She's asked municipalities up there to either deny requests for backyards chickens or budget for regulation. They've been, they've, they've got too many chickens. They had to start a rescue to deal with these abandoned birds. So then let's say we go ahead and, you know, we put all that aside and we decide to go ahead and let's do this chicken thing. According to the CDC, since 2007, there have been 70 salmonella outbreaks that have been linked to backyard poultry. There's been 4,794 illnesses, 894 hospitalizations, and four deaths. That's nationwide. There's all sorts of documentation out there on the internet. For September 2017, pet chickens and ducklings seem likely culprits of a serious public health problem, but they're, but they're responsible for infecting more than 900 people with salmonella this year. That's out of the New York Times. That was published, like I said, for September 2017. The CDC's website itself, there's an alert right now, multi-state outbreaks of human salmonella infections linked to live poultry. If you go down to their recommendations, you know, people want to say they're pets. It says right there, don't play with chickens. Adults should supervise hand washing of children after they've touched chickens. Don't let the poultry live inside your house. Set aside a pair of shoes to wear while taking care of your poultry. The salmonella issue is a big issue with these things. That's why they're in commercial facilities. These people, the commercial farmers, know how to deal with them. I talked about the CDC's alert that they've got out. This was posted June 8th of 2018 at 9:30 a.m. The advisory right now is there's 124 cases of salmonella. It involves 36 states. There's 21 hospitalizations as a result of this. So aside from everything else, it's a public health issue. If we're going to move forward with it, let's get the county health department involved with what the city wants to do. And let's find out what's going to happen and how are we going to deal with these issues that could be brought up as a result of these animals being, living, living in close proximity to human beings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, very much. Next, please. Jan, good to see you.
Hi. My name's Jan Swan. I'm a citizen of East Peoria, resident. And I've either emailed or called all of you and I appreciate the response from four of you. I would like you to know that even though I'm not here every week, every city council meeting, I am watching on social media, so I do get to listen to all of it. So I've listened to all of the things that have been said about chickens. And you know, with my discussions that I've had with you, I oppose it. I'm not going to go into it tonight. There's a lot of other people that want to talk. So I'm just here saying I am in opposition of the chickens. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Cindy Miller. I'm governed by the city of East Peoria. I live in Sunnyland. I wanted to respond about the chickens being a commercial operation or people wanting to have chickens just so they can sell eggs or give eggs away. I don't think that that's the case for most of the people that I know that are in favor of chickens. They want to keep them as pets. They want to keep them for bug control. They want to keep them for several different reasons, not to give away eggs and not to sell them either. I don't know anybody that's wanting to make money off the chickens. I just wanted to say that while I may not myself get chickens myself, I do, I am in support of it. I do think if it's, if it's overseen correctly with the ordinance, people following the ordinance, I think it can be a good thing for the city. I just wanted to say that I'm in support.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Mayor?
Hi, Jim Rannie. I was sitting where you guys were sitting one time.
Long, long time ago.
In fact, I think this came up before our council at that time, and that's been well over 20 years ago. And we felt at that time that although it's honorable to raise chickens, but it wasn't supposed to be raised in a city. So I'm coming here before you to support that idea that I'm opposed to chickens in the city.
Thank you, sir, very much. Anybody else before we move on?
My name's Neil Perrin. I live on Kinnickberry Court in East Peoria. Stood before this council before suggesting that we change the ordinance on chickens. That was in November. Since then, we've worked with the city. We've tried to get an extension in court and we did get an extension in court. I think we've just proved that it can be done responsibly in, in the backyard. We, I, I brought a petition before you from a street. I think it was probably about 30 people in Kinnickberry Court signed it. I've asked my neighbors. I haven't had one complaint. It wasn't until I got a real estate sign in the house next door to me that I got taken. As, it was two or three years I had chickens before that and didn't have any issues. So I, I'm for chickens, so is my wife. My wife really loves them. My children love them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, very much. Anybody else? Mr. Boar, good seeing you. Jan?
Good to be here. Frank Boar. Live at 317 Cottonwood Circle, East Peoria. I grew up with chickens. Grew up in a small town where we had three-quarter acre lots and everybody had chickens in their backyard. That was 60 years ago. You know, we're in the 21st century now. Wife and I just downsized from our house, which was three-quarters of an acre, into a smaller unit. Our backyard is the same size as what our patio was at our old house, okay? My back fence is 28 feet from my patio. I certainly don't want chickens 28 feet from me and I'm definitely against chickens being in the city of East Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Anybody else? Mr. Swan?
I'm here, I sent a note to everyone and talked to most everyone about this issue. I don't believe chickens are suitable in the city. I'm speaking as a resident, not as in business climate or anything such as that. I'm speaking as me and my wife and just don't feel that's right in a neighborhood setting, so that's our beliefs.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Jan, please come forward.
My name is Jan Boar. I live in East Peoria, of course, with Frank. I just want to say I don't think you're looking at all of the objectives. Chickens can cause a lot of problems. We had owned a pest control business and it can bring in foxes and wolves. There's a lot of things and can bring in just all kinds of animals and raccoons and I hate them. But they come around and they hang around that type thing. And I just think that East Peoria has outgrown chickens in the yard. I think that it's, we've come up in the world now and it's keep it up there. We're proud of it and that's my idea.
Thank you, Jan, very much. Anybody else? Make sure everybody gets a chance. Say no one else come forward. We have a consent agenda and there were no objections, so I turn it over to you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, as to the consent agenda, I move to, to adopt a consent agenda consisting of items number one through 18. Last week was a, two weeks ago was a very long meeting. As listed on the agenda, for this meeting to be considered by an amiss vote.
Second please. Second. Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus? While present voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
In which case, Mr. Mayor, I move you that the items numbered one through 18 listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted. The items numbered two through 18, having been read once by their title, having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
Second please. Second.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you very much.
Thank heaven. I don't have quite that many items this evening, Your Honor. Onto my current business. We will start with ordinance number 3994. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 43994 here to attach an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of zoning code and adding a provision to Title Chap, to Title 10, Chapter 2 of the East Peoria City Code to allow the keeping of chickens in the subject, certain, subject to certain limitations. Be accepted on its first reading. It's read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, what we have before us is an ordinance that would allow for a special use for any party wishing to keep chickens. Not more than five chickens would be allowed, no roosters. A fee for the special use of $150 is the only fee associated. A permit would still need to be issued upon approval of the site plan, which would have to be submitted. All this would be run through the zoning board of appeals. A follow-up inspection would be done to ensure compliance. A setback of at least 15 feet from any lot line would be enforced and any enclosure for chickens would not exceed 100 square feet. That's what we have before us. To give a little chronology of how we got here and to address a little bit of what Bob was talking about. Last fall, we had a couple of code violations that we had in court on this very topic. At that point in time, I believe some of the folks in the audience probably reached out to council members and we had said all along that if there was a majority of the council that wanted to visit this issue, that we would do so. So at that point in time, there were three commissioners that wanted to take a look at it. So I asked Ty to come up with an ordinance, which is what we have before us tonight. That ordinance went before the zoning board of appeals and it passed 6-0, Ty. However, since that time, we ran through the budget and some other things that we needed to get done. And I believe commissioners heard from residents, did some research on their own. And since that time, as became apparent at the meeting two weeks ago, there was not support for passage of this. However, Bob stood before us and we've had a lot of other comment, I believe, on social media saying, well, this deserves a vote. Well, Bob, I agree with that. We drafted an ordinance. It went through the zoning board of appeals where it passed. They held a hearing. It deserves its day. And since your comments and some others two weeks ago, some others up here agreed with that point of view, so that's why we're here this evening. I, from the beginning, as you all are aware, I have not been in favor of this. I simply don't believe chickens and other, whether it be bees, chickens, whatever, have a place within the city limits. I certainly respect those that choose to keep chickens, whether it's for pets and simply the enjoyment, teach their children. I, I understand that. I don't believe that inside the city limits are the place for it. And I have heard for about a year and a half, loud and clear from many residents, some of which are here this evening, that they agree with that perspective and do not want chickens within the city. So that's, in fact, I heard from three residents totally unsolicited today on that very topic and each and every one of them was in opposition to this. So that's where my position comes from and that's why I will be voting no this evening. Commissioner Call, a couple of weeks ago, cited what I think is, is a good insight, is that we have very limited code enforcement personnel. They're very busy as is and if this were to pass, they would be even busier. And we have other work that we think their time would be better spent on, so for those reasons, I will be opposing this.
Before we go any further with the comments from the council, I want to say thank you to each of you who participated. Your civility and respect for one another is commendable. That's the way government should run, so thank you very much. Commissioners?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I wasn't here two weeks ago and so I didn't get to speak at that point. As Commissioner pointed out, for me, this started about eight years ago. I think I first started hearing from people with the idea of us considering chickens. And it wasn't until recently did I hear people speak out against it. As you all know, the ZVA meeting, there was no one there to speak out against it. So it gave everybody the impression that it was fully supported. Maybe when we, when I started into this, or I guess down this path, I may have been a bit naive in thinking we could come up with something that would be suitable and a large majority of the community would support. And I'll admit that, maybe I was a bit naive because me personally, I've, I've got no problem. I live on three acres. I do live in town, but I, I'm fortunate enough to have three acres. My property situated in such a fashion that most people couldn't see what I have in my backyard. And I'll say this, if this, if chickens were to pass tonight, my daughter and my wife would probably have chickens within a week. But it's, I, I can't think of that just for me. For me, it was a matter of, okay, I understand it, so I want to find out what other people think. So throughout this, this process, I have listened to others. I put some posts out on Facebook asking people what they thought and I have asked, without exaggerating, 100, 200 people, hey, what's your opinion on this? I've gotten in many conversations. And what I will say is overwhelmingly, I've heard either no, I don't want chickens, or I've heard people say, well, I don't mind chickens being in East Peoria, but I don't want them next to me, or I don't want them on my street. Again, go back a bit. When we started looking at the special use, I was a bit naive thinking that we could, we could create something that would allow us to take into effect or into account the public's opinion, the neighborhood's opinion. But once this passed, I had a conversation with Dennis Triggs, who said that we can't do that. If, if a, if an item comes before us, a special use, we can't then go to the neighbors and ask them if they support it or not. It's just, that's not a legal thing to do. So it kind of washes that out. I'm not able to do that. So I've got to take it on, on what it is, whether I'm going to support it or I'm not going to support it. I wasn't here a couple of weeks ago, but I watched the council meeting and I remember a lady stood and said, well, what can I do? What can I do to get this to pass? And I would say that the only thing that would, would change is if, if the community sentiment changed. Because I do believe the majority of the people in East Peoria stand in opposition to chickens. Not necessarily them being in the city, but them being next door to them or in their backyard or real close to them. So I, I sympathize with those who are wanting them as pets, but everybody chooses to invest in the city of East Peoria for whatever reason. And some chose to invest in the city of East Peoria for certain rules and some chose or choose to live in a community or choose, to live in a community not to live next to livestock. So, whereas it may not necessarily affect me, I can say that I've done due diligence. I have asked many, many people the way they feel, and I believe the public sentiment is against passing this tonight, so I will be voting no as well.
As I stated two weeks ago, I'm not going to go into great detail, and I, what Commissioner Densberger mentioned before, I agree with. I had some vast concerns about the limited amount of resources we have in code enforcement, and it became clear to me over the last several months that this is where this was headed. It was going to be complaint-driven. I think the vast majority of citizens in East Peoria do oppose having chickens within the city limits, and so for that reason, I will not be supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jeffers?
I think, as Commissioner Decker said, we've gone over this for seven, eight years, actually, since the beginning, I think, of doing it, or the discussions brought up, and it's been essentially the same arguments along that path, although not until this round have we been able to drag it out long enough that we did get more participation from the community, I think. And that's not a criticism, but that's just the nature of things. I guess I also was of the view, like Commissioner Decker said, I felt like with the special use permit that had been drafted with a one-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee to get in the game, to be a permit, and the limitations put in there, the fifteen-foot off the property line, and I've been around chickens, haven't raised them, but I've been around them, my family, et cetera, at different times. You know, I'm still surprised that when people have said to me, "Well, you can't have roosters." Well, I said, "Well, our resolution never has considered that." And so I think some of the opposition was, they still didn't know exactly what we were proposing as far as, you know, regulating this, but they were just against that, and I understand that. The understanding in those that think of chickens raised by the dozen, which is the case in agriculture and farms and such, I was around a family relative, and they had about seven hens sitting, well, actually, I'm not saying, they had about twelve each chicks, you know, they just hatched and they run around the barnyard, and that's a lot of fun, you know, but that was a barnyard. And they're cute, and I realize there's obligations of the owners, you know, once they reach maturity, they have their stock and everything else. We have the same thing with dogs, other pets in homes. We have, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, it's neighbors getting along with neighbors. I think personally, if I were king, I'd say, "If you're street, and no one opposes, and you can meet these guidelines, and why would there be any opposition if your neighbors were okay with it? That's us getting along with each other and do it." But I really feel like, in doing a little homework, look at Sister City, Pekin, about zero issues at all with chickens. They've had them for years, and years, and years. Never comes up, they're a town of thirty thousand plus, and you think, "Well, that should give us some guideline as to how we might respond." And I know Ty and the staff modeled this after other communities. But I will say this, and I knew this to be true, and I did receive an email, I think each of the council did too, having backyard chickens is not exactly just a new thing, or just for small towns, it's really not. Some of you may vacation in these places. Glendale, Arizona, Mesa, Peoria, Arizona, Gilbert, which is a suburb of Phoenix, Anaheim, Disney World, Disneyland, Anaheim allows chickens in their backyards. Bakersfield, California, Oakland, Pasadena, Orange County, I mean, we're talking Stockton, California, Denver, Colorado, New Haven, Connecticut, we're talking Ivy League areas here. Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Jacksonville, Florida, Miami, Orlando, Atlanta, Georgia, Honolulu, Chicago, I'm not sure that's a good thing for us to model after, because Chicago does it, but they do it. Fort Wayne, Indianapolis, Wichita, you get the picture, Louisville, Kentucky, Kansas City, Omaha, Nebraska, Las Vegas. People have done this before, this is nothing new, and these people, their homes are not going to pop for property values, no one mentioned that tonight, but we were all lobbied about that, and I thought, "Well, that's a fair thing, you don't want certain things next door," I understand that, but I think there's ways to get along as neighbors, and it could be whether you have, you know, those that play the loud music at different times of the night or day, or chainsaw, or mowing their grass at six in the morning, or there's all kinds of things that you do, that you shouldn't do, that upset your neighbors. And if, really, if I were to contemplate having chickens myself, if it were legal, I wouldn't want to do it if I knew my neighbor was just dead-set against it or had a problem. But, at the same time, I think it could work, and I think with these pretty strict regulations we had, that we had a way to make it happen. The zoning board was six-nothing, yes, for it. And we tend to sometimes say, "Well, the zoning board does something I agree with, therefore, it's great, now if they oppose what I want to do, then I'll say, 'Well, we can override that.'" And I don't think that's our intention here tonight, at least as a vote, we'll find out here in a minute or so. But, anyway, I will still support this. I think it's still the right thing to do in principle, to allow people who are responsible to do it. This has been a real ongoing thing for years and years, and I apologize for it taking so long to come up with an evening like this where we just say, "Well, we just can't do it." I would have thought we could have, as a small town, we can make things work, but that's okay. We'll step back and see what may happen in the future. I will see how the residents respond. This is pretty even here tonight, about what I would have expected, I guess, and that would match pretty much what I've heard over the last several years. So, you know, you hate to say it, you get maybe, I wouldn't say threats from both sides, but people are very impassioned with either side, and we get both, and I understand that. I have, I could defend either side, I really could, but I really appreciate and respect the people that have persevered for all these years and asked for a hearing, to give it a chance, be willing to do this. You know, I know that you can look at nationwide stats and so forth, that I just read you off, towns which, in the population of millions, that have this, some of them, and they, there's no epidemic there, there's no issue there, so I think we could have made it work here, but we don't, I guess we'll vote and then we'll move on. But, I will support it, and I really appreciate the well-thought-out, I think, the side that I felt like, as far as with the chickens, that you did a good job of presenting the pros to what you wanted to do, and you've also demonstrated, I think by being gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen in it too, so that's a good point that came out to me.
Thank you. I think it's all been said. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
No.
Densberger.
No.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Call.
No.
Mayor Mingus.
No.
At four notes and one, aye, Your Honor. Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-four-zero-four here to attach, an ordinance authorizing a special use for property located at two-ninety-eight South Main Street in the city of East Peoria, Tazza County, Illinois, to allow for outdoor display and sale of vehicles, be read at length by the clerk, and that said ordinance number four-four-zero-four be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Morgan?
Whereas, Ola Kunle Ofalabi, the petitioner has petitioned for a special use to allow the signing of a used car dealership on property zone B-three Business Service District and located at two-ninety-eight South Main Street, as shown and described in Exhibit A, attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Property as so described herein referred to as the property. Whereas after hearing pursuant to duly published notice, the East Peoria Zoning Board of Appeals has recommended approval of the proposed special use, subject to certain conditions herein after set forth. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazza County, Illinois, that section one, a special use to allow the signing of a used car dealership on the property is hereby approved. Section two, the establishment and continuation of the special use hereby authorizes contingent upon continual compliance with all applicable provisions of the city code and following special conditions. One, petitioner shall establish a special use approved by this ordinance in accordance with the site plan prepared and submitted by the petitioner. Two, not more than eight vehicles may be displayed for sale at any given time on the property. Three, petitioner shall prepare and present a landscaping plan for the property to the Director of Planning and Community Development for review and approval, and then install and maintain the approved landscaping plan, all in accordance with the timeframe established by the Director of Planning and Community Development. Four, all improvements authorized or required by this ordinance shall be completed and continuously maintained in accordance with the site plan. Upon the violation of or failure to comply with the foregoing conditions or with any provisions of the city code applicable to the property or its use, city council may, after providing reasonable notice and an opportunity for a hearing, terminate the special use hereby approved. Section three, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk, and said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future and in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section four, this ordinance is in addition to all other ordinances on the subject and shall be construed therewith, excepting as to that part in direct conflict with any other ordinance, and in the event of such conflict, the provisions hereof shall govern. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval, ten-day period of publication and manner provided by law.
Thank you, Morgan. Obviously, this is a special use to allow for a small vehicle sales lot, no more than eight vehicles, maybe for sale at any time, and a landscaping plan would still need to be submitted, reviewed, and approved by staff before it could open. This lot would be, as described on Main Street, proximate to, just down from Johnson Street, about where Golden Everett used to join, which is...
The site map's inaccurate.
Why the employer has an ATM?
Well, this is actually the house that's in front of the former builders in cash and carry, so my apologies, the map was incorrect, just a bit off, but the gentleman here has submitted a revised landscaping plan, there's already existing landscaping, he's providing some additional amount. We look forward to him to get operational here yet this summer.
Other discussion? My understanding is, there are only going to be eight cars allowed, is that true?
That would be the maximum allowed at any one.
He's starting this part-time.
Okay.
I happened to attend the ZBA meeting about the winery, and he, I sat through the rest of the meeting since I was there.
Oh, okay. Was he, is, does he have plans then to enlarge it as time goes on?
Probably not at that facility, but I assume if his business does well, he'll be looking to expand somewhere.
A lot of space there.
No, it's pretty tight. You've got the adjacent building that is, doesn't have anything in it at the moment, but the towing company, so there'll probably be more tenants in there in the future, making expansion a bit of a challenge.
I think that's what I was wondering about, the adjacent building, if that might have been his plan, to try to grab a hold of that, but just curious.
At this point, it would be between him and the property owner, but just the house for now.
Okay.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And now I know why Dick Williams is here. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-four-zero-five here to attach, an ordinance authorizing an off-premise sign located on property adjacent to thirty-two-ten East Washington Street in the city of East Peoria, Tazza County, Illinois, pin zero-one-zero-one-two-five-three-zero-four-zero-one-two. Be read at length by the clerk, and that said, ordinance number forty-four-zero-five, be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Thank you, Commissioner. Morgan?
Whereas Dick Williams, on behalf of the law firm of Williams, Williams &amp; Benic, PC, the petitioner has petitioned for a special, sorry, for a permit to construct an off-premises sign on certain real properties, zone as B-three Business Service District, which property is shown and described in Exhibit A, attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, which property is so described herein after referred to as the property. Whereas the petitioner's off-premises sign is a freestanding sign that is not located within one-thousand feet of another off-premises sign while meeting all setback requirements and compliance with section four-dash-seven-dash-seven of the city of East Peoria Sign Code. Whereas after hearing pursuant to duly published notice, East Peoria Zoning Board of Appeals has recommended issuance of the proposed permit for an off-premises sign, subject to certain conditions herein after set forth. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazza County, Illinois, that section one, the petitioner is hereby authorized to construct an off-premises, automatic changeable copy sign on the property. Section two, the authority to construct and maintain the off-premises sign authorized by this ordinance is contingent upon continual compliance with all applicable provisions of the city code and the following special conditions. One, the sign shall be located in accordance with the site plan prepared and submitted by the petitioner for this off-premises sign. Two, the sign not have more than two faces, and the copy area of each sign shall not exceed ten feet by fifteen feet in size. Three, petitioner shall prepare and present a landscaping plan for the base of the sign to the Director of Planning and Community Development for review and approval, and then install and maintain the approved landscaping plan, all in accordance with the timeframe established by the Director of Planning and Community Development. Four, all improvements authorized or required by this ordinance shall be completed and continuously maintained in accordance with the site plan and approved landscaping plan. Upon the violation of or failure to comply with either, comply either with the foregoing conditions or with any provisions of the city code applicable to this off-premises sign or to the property or its use, city council may, after providing reasonable notice and an opportunity for a hearing, terminate the authority to maintain the sign on the property or revoke the permit issued for this off-premises sign. Section three, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk, and that clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section four, this ordinance is in addition to all other ordinances on the subject and shall be construed therewith, excepting as to that part in direct conflict with any other ordinance, and in the event of such conflict, the provisions hereof shall govern. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval, ten-day period of publication and the manner provided by law.
Thank you, Morgan. The petitioner is Dick Williams, who's with us here this evening. This passed through the ZBA, it was recommended by a six-oh vote, as described, the sign shall not be larger than ten by fifteen in area, it may be changeable copy, and a landscaping plan would need to be submitted and approved by staff. There are no signs, other signs proximate to it within a thousand feet, or well beyond a thousand feet, I'm sure, and I guess, other than my own personal dislike of signs of this type, I don't really have a reason to oppose it, so. Dick, anything you would care to add?
No, I think I'll do my best.
Ty, anything else?
This is maybe a little more unique than your typical outdoor billboard, and most of them we have out there are three-hundred square feet and above, and this one meets our code requirements, it's less than a hundred-and-fifty square feet, and it isn't a location that's not adjacent to others, it's on the hill going up Route Eight, opposite Edge Hill Court.
As you would be going toward Ravine and Sunny Land, it would be just as you crest the hill on the right side.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-three-nine-five here to attach, an ordinance adding new chapter sixteen-point-one to Title Four of the East Peoria City Code, regarding the regulation of small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way, having been read once by its title, having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection, be adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. We had four of these last week, and evidently, this one, there was a technical change within the verbiage, which required us not to place it on the consent agenda. Ty, care to cover it?
It's really housekeeping matters, one of the reasons why we presented these and had them laid on the table for two weeks is it provided an opportunity for some of our wireless providers in the area to provide comment. We did receive some comments, and it was really largely housekeeping issues to make it compliant with the code, and so we appreciate the city attorney's office working hard to get this adjusted, so that's why it's not on the consent agenda, it's technically slightly different than what you saw last meeting.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Next, Your Honor, we're going to try and sell some property. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-four-zero-zero here to attach, an ordinance providing for the sale of excess city property at one-zero-eight Field Avenue, be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Commissioner. This property has, was appraised at seven thousand. Code provides that it, we have a tolerance of eighty percent of that, we have an offer on the property from a neighbor for six thousand, which falls within that, and it'll be good to get this, recover a little bit of money, and get it back on the tax rolls.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Now we're going to buy some property. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-four-zero-three here to attach, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4403 here to attach, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase contract for property adjacent to Bloomington Road, parcel ID number 050502400003, be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner, call.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is property that was put up for sale by the county, as described, it is along Bloomington Road, the cross, it's actually a corner lot, which is Amelia Drive, by purchasing this for the astounding sum of $657.40, it would allow us a little bit of leeway to deal with the right-of-way and other issues, so.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
The next two, Your Honor, are actually some good news. Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4401 here to attach, an ordinance amending the terms of an electrical franchise agreement with Ameren Illinois Company, doing business as Ameren Illinois, be read at length by the clerk, and that said, ordinance number 4401 be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner, call.
Thank you, Commissioner. Morgan?
Whereas the city of East Peoria, the city is a unit of local government with authority to legislate matters concerning its local government affairs, and whereas the city's current electric franchise ordinance, ordinance number 3970, with Ameren Illinois Company doing business as Ameren Illinois, expires on April 19, 2021, and whereas it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city to amend the terms of the electric franchise ordinance, now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that section one, the terms of the electric franchise ordinance are hereby amended to compensate the city in the amount of $178,600 annually payable in quarterly payments of $44,650, commencing with the April 2018 payment, anniversary date April 19, in lieu of the $139,000 referenced in section six of the electric franchise ordinance. Because the April 2018 payment was dispersed under the terms of the current franchise, the difference due to the city is $9,900 with 30 days of acceptance of this ordinance, within 30 days of acceptance of this ordinance. This amendment is due to the terms of the growth clause in section six of the electric franchise ordinance being enacted. The electric customer count in the city has increased from 9,911 in 2011 to 11,912 in April of 2018. Except as expressly modified by this ordinance, provisions of the electric franchise ordinance shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict hereof are hereby repealed effective upon the effective date of this ordinance. Section three, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk, and said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication in the manner provided by law and its acceptance by the company.
Thank you, Morgan. This item and the next item, 4402, are absolutely related. What has taken place is Mr. Cole of our staff was reviewing our franchise agreements with Ameren for electrical and gas franchise, and in those agreements, section six provides that if the number of customers increase within our system by 3%, we may ask for a revision of the compensation that the city receives. So, we followed up with Ameren on it, our usage with the development of the Levy District and some other things over the past several years, increased from 8,065 customer in 2011 to 9,991, so we certainly met that threshold, and by revisiting this item, thanks to Mr. Cole, the city will realize an increase in compensation on this agreement from Ameren between gas and electric of $65,935.
Very good. Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
And the sister item, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number 4402 here to attach, an ordinance amending the terms of a gas franchise agreement with Ameren Illinois Company, doing business as Ameren Illinois, be read at length by the clerk, and that said, ordinance number 4402 be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Commissioner. Once again, Morgan?
Whereas the city of East Peoria is a unit of local government with authority to legislate matters concerning its local government and affairs, and whereas the city's current gas franchise ordinance, ordinance number 3971, with Ameren Illinois Company doing business as Ameren Illinois, the company expires on April 19, 2021, whereas it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city to amend the terms of the gas franchise ordinance, now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that section one, the terms of the gas franchise ordinance are hereby amended to compensate the city in the amount of $71,155 annually, commencing with the April 2018 payment, anniversary date April 19, in lieu of the $44,820 referenced in section six of the gas franchise ordinance. Because the April 2018 payment was dispersed under the terms of the current franchise, the difference due to the city is $26,335 within 30 days of acceptance of this ordinance. This amendment is due to the terms of the growth clause in section six of the gas franchise ordinance being enacted. The gas customer count in the city has increased from 8,065 in 2011 to 9,938 in April of 2018. Except as expressly modified by this ordinance, the provisions of the gas franchise ordinance shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict hereof are hereby repealed effective upon the effective date of this ordinance. Section three, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk, said clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies hereof available for public inspection in the future and in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication in the manner provided by law and its acceptance by the company.
Thank you, Morgan. As I said, this is the sister agreement to the first one, I'd like to commend Mr. Cole for finding this and looking for ways to increase the city's revenue stream, and to thank staff in general for this type of work, because this is, whether it's finding new revenue or saving money on the expense side, it's what we need to take place at this point in time, and this was a great catch, it's akin to literally finding money on the street.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I just want to give kudos to Mr. Cole, appreciate the due diligence and looking into this stuff, and it just goes to show you, a little bit of effort can go a long way sometimes, so appreciate it.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Now, I'll read one at length, Your Honor, and save Morgan the trouble, although mine's much shorter. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that the next regular meeting of the Council of the City of East Peoria originally scheduled for Tuesday, July 3, 2018, be canceled due to the Fourth of July holiday and fireworks celebration. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk will cause to be posted a notice of such cancellation. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I move you that resolution number 1819-027 be adopted as presented.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Commissioner. As stated, this is, our meeting would be on July 3, the day before the holiday, and I believe we can save our business till the third week of the month, and everyone can enjoy the holiday.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you very much.
And that, sir, is all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Decker?
Mr. Mayor, I have one item. It's resolution number 1819-034, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois. The resolution number 1819-034 here to attach, resolution approving a proposal from J.C. Dillon Incorporated to slipline storm sewer main in the vicinity of 404 South Summit Drive in the city of East Peoria be approved, and this resolution number 1819-034 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner Jeffers?
Thank you, Commissioner Jeffers. I spoke with Rick Simonsky at length this morning regarding this South Summit, we have an area that is actually collapsing, I remember the first time I heard about sliplining, it was from Mr. Folkmark years ago when he was on the council, and it was kind of a new thing they were doing, now we do it all the time, but in talking with Rick today, I asked him about if this was the, what we should be doing, or if this is one we should be tearing out completely, redoing, and which would take its longevity versus its cost. Rick really believes that this is the best thing to do for the cost, he believes it will get many years of service out of it. In speaking of the cost, we had two bids, I have them in front of me, the one we're going to award is $26,880, and the other bid came in at $34,250.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
It's all right now, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Your Honor, I misspoke, I do have one more item, so everybody gets to listen to me one more time. I have resolution 1819-028, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1819-028 here to attach, the resolution accepting the lowest responsible bidder for Festival of Lights Building Dry Sprinkler System Pipe Replacement to Automatic Fire Sprinkler Company, and the amount of $10,790 be approved, and that this resolution number 1819-028 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner, call.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is, as stated, is a dry sprinkler system, it's not charged with anything but compressed air on a daily basis, but the existing system is, I believe it's plastic piping, it has sprung several leaks, which causes it to charge and be unreliable, so this is to replace that system with a three-inch galvanized pipe, which hopefully will get us a better product, safer product, and more durable.
Other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out, we had three bids received, and that was the lowest by, looks like about $2,400.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you very much.
Promise I'm done, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Decker, move to Commissioner Jeffers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have three items at this time. First one, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1819-030 here to attach, a resolution accepting the lowest responsible bidder for purchase of a chlorine scrubber unit for the Oakwood Water Treatment Plant from Dryden Equipment, Inc., and the amount of $56,866 be approved, and that this resolution number 1819-030 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please. Second. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. The water plant there at Oakwood, a couple of things going on there, we are converting our chlorine system to a direct injection type system, on that same site, we have two wells that are producing water for the city, which under old technology, that was the only two wells on that site we were using, there's actually a third well that we were not able to inject or add the chlorine to it as we were treating the water to distribute out to the system. Going to a consolidated chlorine system allows us to have direct injection, DI injection, for all three wells, but the third well in production, which actually takes a lot of the load off the other two, and it gives us a safer system with the scrubber involved here, is if you have a chlorine leak, it's simply what it says, it scrubs the air, it removes the chlorine from the air, and it's not a risk, chlorine gas is quite dangerous, as you know, and that is an EPA mandate for this, and it makes it safer for our workers, it gives us a better system for producing water, ultimately at a lower cost, and actually lengthens the life of our wells considerably to have three onboard at that site versus just two. Anything else, Dennis, for us on that one?
No, you hit every single thing on it.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Densberger?
Aye.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Mayor Mingus?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Next, be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number 1819-031 here to attach, a resolution approving a proposal from Hair Construction, Inc., to slipline various sanitary sewer mains in the city, and the amount of $265,541.20 be approved, and that's this resolution number 1819-031 be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second please.
Second.
Commissioner, call.
Thank you, Commissioner, call. Dollar amounts sometimes scares us, especially when we think of maybe our bill at home, buying a car, or home repair, in terms of sliplining and repair of our infrastructure, this is the cost of doing business. Sliplining actually, and Commissioner Decker already touched on it, sliplining includes, or what it involves is putting a new layer internally, in this case, a wastewater piping system, wastewater pipes, in different places of the city, and gives you another life, basically, of that pipe, without having to do any excavation. We've been talking to staff for some time about, instead of just doing a job now, a job later, just, let's just go out for a larger quote, and it goes with how we do, at times if we can, the road construction, where we can get a better price at a larger job, depending on who bids the job. And in this case, we did it, and staff took up the challenge, put out the quote, this work will be done over the winter, our off-season hours, so it gives us the contractor's best price of the year, actually, and it saves us about one-third the cost over doing it piecemeal, smaller job, smaller job, smaller job. This will actually cover over two miles of city streets, wastewater systems, Brookview area, Richland, Ridge Road, Springfield Road, Briarbrook and Harris over by Shoot School, and then Avondale. A few of these areas have had, a lot of, what this does, it prevents leakage or infiltration of water, groundwater into your sewer system, which can just overload your system. And I know we've, what we've seen is the, when you get a lot of rain, groundwater, it gets into your sewer system, but it also undermines along the piping, and also undermines where these are, it's streets, it makes your streets begin to sink as you undermine the foundation under that, so by correcting and by fixing the sliplining in these wastewater sewage pipes, it actually firms up the foundation below. You don't even see it happening, it's just they put it in and use a catalyst and harden it, it gives that surface, but this will show quite a bit of improvement, I think, in the Shoot School area, where we've had a lot of groundwater issues and undermining of the streets and so forth there, but like I say, this whole thing is over two miles long. Hair was well over a hundred thousand lower than our second bid, so our guesswork, our hope-so-work of putting it out for bid early, really is paying off, and they can do it as they are able to fit it in their schedule, and it's at their lowest cost, they are more productive, and they pass that savings on to us. It's a win-win deal. We are putting off the cost of a lift station this year to actually pay for the bulk of this, and we can get by, and it's within budget, and it'll just save us a lot of money and grief, and be a good thing for our homeowners, too.
Thank you. No discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
One final thing, Mr. Mayor. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number one-eight-one-nine-dash-zero-two-nine heretofore attached, a resolution approving agreement for staffing East Peoria Public Safety Building walk-up window with Tazewell County Consolidated Communications, TC Three, be approved, and that this resolution number one-eight-one-nine-dash-zero-two-nine be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Call.
We're in that transition period, going from our own nine-one-one call center to consolidated chief. Any comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. This is a byproduct of the forced state-mandated consolidation for dispatch centers. For approximately the next, it could be as long as a year, TC Three, the new consolidated center, will be operating out of the East Peoria Dispatch Center, dispatching the usual East Peoria Creek Core, Fodalec Park, as well as Morton Police Department will be also becoming and dispatching from there. And without this agreement, we were looking at the prospect of only having personnel, very limited personnel, to staff the window, to provide public ser, you know, public service to the public, and they walk in for only about, you know, eight hours a day during the week, probably none on the weekends, and sixteen hours a day. You would walk in the public safety building and have to pick up a phone, which would then ring on the other side of the window, and you would have to wait for a sergeant or an officer to come in to assist you. That will eventually happen, but I think this agreement buys us some time, it enables us, the city, a better opportunity to decide how many personnel, how many hours we want to staff that window in the future, how many personnel it'll take to staff that window in the future, and what we can do. So, I think for the nominal cost, we, that TC Three was going to pay rent, which is basically what we're trading the service for, I think it's going to help continue to provide a good public service to the public when they walk in the public safety building, and it'll help us keep our operation, some continuity in our operation for a while.
And I agree, and I know TC Three, the City of Washington, just approved a similar agreement Monday evening. Makes perfect sense, and in this agreement, there is some language that includes to make a good faith effort to ensure that it's a, an existing employee. In other words, someone that's employed by the City of East Peoria now will likely be staffed here in the interim as well, under TC Three. So, I think it's a, I think it's a wise move.
Absolutely. No discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jeffers. Commissioner Call.
One item this evening, sir. Resolution number one-eight-one-nine-dash-zero-three-two. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of East Peoria, Illinois, that a permit for a public exhibition of fireworks be held on July fourth, two thousand eighteen, rain date, July fifth, two thousand eighteen, to Alpha Media LLC Melrose Pyrotechnics, Inc., in connection with the Fourth of July fireworks, Unity Point Health Red, White, and Boom in East Peoria, Illinois. Be it further resolved that the thirty-dollar license fee required by section three dash four dash six of the city code be hereby waived, and that this resolution number one-eight-one-nine-dash-zero-three-two be adopted as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Densberger.
Thank you, Commissioner Densberger. Formality here, we are issuing the permit to make sure that this thing goes off without a hitch.
Hard to believe it's Fourth of July.
Yep, right around the corner.
No discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Densberger.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Mayor Mingus.
Aye.
While present, voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
It's all have, sir.
Commissioner Call. Comments from the audience on a non-agend item come forward? Saying no one come forward. Comments from the council, Commissioner Decker. Well, Frank, come on.
I know, I just want to thank you for my container that you, the city, put online.
Recycle.
Oh, thank you very much. Commissioner Decker, you're more than welcome.
Thank you, I'm glad Frank mentioned that. Our first load of containers have come in, and we have, still have plenty left from this load, correct?
The first load is actually gone. The second load showed up Monday morning, and we're actually getting those out the door already. We're a couple hundred in already to that load, so we're moving through them. Once they showed up, more people seemed to flock to come and buy them, so.
People are really happy with them. They're, I think they look good, and it's nice that people are accepting of them. It begins July, which, which week in July?
Ninth.
July ninth begins the every-other-week collection, yes.
Right, but then it's not mandatory until next year in July, correct? I kind of wanted to piggyback on what they were talking about a little while ago with Mr. Cole, Robert Cole. I had lunch with him not long ago, and he was explaining to me the, the light switch that we've done throughout all the city buildings in East Peoria. Mayor, I think it'd be a good idea sometime, and maybe not just for that, but if we could ever incorporate him coming in to speak about the savings that, that changeover has had for the city, I think it would be very good for the citizens. I was, I was sitting here the last few minutes trying to remember exactly what he said, and I don't want to say a number, because I, I'm afraid I would be incorrect, but it was a lot of money. It shocked me, how much money the city has saved because of the energy conservation and the switching to the different bulbs. Ty, do you know, off the top of your head, how much?
Various projects had different returns on investment, and, you know, we're talking about returns on investments of less than a year in many cases. I don't know the overall number, but I'm sure Robert would be thrilled to come speak to the council about it. He's very passionate about this, and really gets into it, and has done a terrific job, just like with the items tonight. He sniffs out these things and takes advantage of them, and has done a great job for us.
You'll get that done.
I would say, I think it's, it's over a third.
Yeah, when we were, when you guys were talking about him a little while ago, that came to mind, and having lunch with him that day made me think the public not only would like to hear that, but needs to hear that, how beneficial it was for the city to do, and how much money we were able to save because of the work that he did. Finally, as we mentioned earlier, I was not here last council meeting. I, first time I was ever able to do it, our fire department, not sends people, but members of our fire department volunteer to assist with the Honor of Flight. We're the ones that assist in helping the veterans on and off the plane, on and off the buses, carrying the wheelchairs and things like that. Chief Naps been at least one, maybe multiple of the flights. First time I've ever been able to do it, and as I get older, the things I find that I enjoy the most are the volunteer things, whether it be helping with a marching band or, or this. Man, what a great event. On our flight, I met one gentleman that was there in Normandy. I met a man who was there when they raised the flag in Irojima. The history that some of these people have, and to be able to sit for a couple minutes and discuss what they went through, so we can have security and safety and freedom, it's amazing. I got, I think I got there, I don't know, five o'clock in the morning or so, I think I got up at three-thirty, tired, but I didn't think about being tired all day, until I got home, and we were dead tired. But it was one of the best things that I've done, volunteer-wise, it was just great. Enjoyed it. They are usually on Tuesday nights, so if ever I do it again, I would probably have to miss another meeting, but I've had nothing but support about that, and I appreciate everybody on the council being supportive of that and covering me, that meeting. It was one of those events that if, if you have a veteran in your family that has not seen some of those, you know, World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War veteran, not seeing those memorials, take advantage of getting that veteran on one of these flights. They deserve it. They, the, the reception they get when they get to Washington DC, and then especially the reception they get when they get home, walking through the airport, having a thousand people or more, not only applauding for them, but there's music, and it's just a great event. I can't, I can't put into words how good it was. The only way to fully understand it is to go there and witness it. It was great, it's something that we should do, and I encourage everybody to take the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for your service there, too. Commissioner Denver.
Your Honor, I have nothing further except to wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jeffers.
I had the chance this past week, this is just, this happens, I know, not just with myself, I know the mayor's active in this a lot, but he wasn't able to do this, so I had a chance to pinch it for him. We had in town the postal workers convention for the State of Illinois, they're nationals, or not national, they're state convention here in Peoria, East Peoria, at the embassy, and several hundred, six, five, six hundred, I don't know how many for sure, if they're all sitting down at one time, you know it, but the ballroom was filled and the space we had, and, and so, just had a chance to spend a few minutes with them, and they were very grateful, enjoying their visit in East Peoria and the Peoria area, but also enjoying the embassy and the staff was just perfect for them. The local here is based out of Bartonville, but they, their leadership, I did talk with them, and then the president and that, so it was just a fun time, to spend a few minutes with them, and they gave me a goodie bag, and if that counts as anything, that needs to be reported, Mayor, but a little goodie bag that they give their guests, and I appreciate that, but it was a good time. That goes on all the time with these type of groups in our city, we don't always know that, that they were here, they were, they had here for three nights, and busy, and doing their business.
Thanks for doing that, too.
And I'll give a little hometown report. The Church I-ten Oak Grove Bible Church on Springfield Road is celebrating their sixty-ninth annual Vacation Bible School this week, so sixty-nine years, every year since nineteen fifty. And I think that's, I know we have our historical president here tonight, Mr. Frank, for East Peoria Historical Society. I know the Bible school began the old Oak Grove Grade School, Schoolhouse, and you've written an article about that a couple of times at least, and so it began in that manner, and has continued on now for sixty-nine years, so time goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Call.
Just a couple of quick things regarding the chicken vote this evening. I know those that were in favor of it were pretty passionate. I attended that ZBA meeting, there were probably forty or so people that showed up in support of it. I didn't see anybody, or if they were there, they didn't get up and oppose it. So, in the back of my mind, going back two weeks ago, there were a couple supporters here that were pretty passionate, especially the one Commissioner Decker had mentioned, she wanted to know what she could do to bring it to a vote. I explained then, two weeks ago, that had we voted on it that night, it was not going to pass by a three-to-one vote.